We'll now move on to item H2, discussion regarding review of executive search firms' proposals.
So you have before you the six firms that have submitted proposals. McPherson-Jacobson, Leadership Associate, COSCA Group, Educational Leadership Services, Ray and Associates, and Hazert Young and Atia. So this is your opportunity to discuss the merits of those based on the criteria that you set in the RFP and select, I believe it's three, that you wanted to select for interviewing next Wednesday night.
And before we do that, I just wanted to allow the board an opportunity to address any of the comments made earlier in public comment if they choose to do so.
So I cut the tail end and I got some written comments as well from Ms. Collins. And I appreciate the comments and the support for one of our own internal people. But as for me, I think the, without respect to how outstanding any given person is internally, the superintendentcy is just the most important person in this district, the most important position, and that it's our fiduciary duty to make sure if we're going to hire an internal person or an external, but if it is going to be an internal, that we better make sure that there's no one, you know, more qualified or out there that would also like to work here. So I think we owe it to the district to spend the money and take the time and effort ourselves to look and make sure that we've cast a wide net, considered all our options, and we're making the, get as much community involvement as we can in deciding what we're looking for in a superintendent and community input into the process for selecting a superintendent. So I don't see any downside, other than our time and the cost, to going forward with a search firm, I think. So I'm in favor of doing that. I think the cost is, you know, minimal when you consider the potential value we could get from either selecting an outstanding external candidate or knowing and having the confidence and the community support and belief that we've searched far and wide and we just, you know, found the best candidate. In my own job, we just hired a new executive director and it was the internal candidate. That did not stop us from spending about the same amount of money that we're going to spend here for an organization that's, you know, about a tenth the budget, a fifth, I guess, of our district budget, to do a national search, sort through 100 candidates and, you know, winnow it down to eventually two or three and then realize, you know what? The guy we've been working with for several years here is the best person. And we all feel confident that that was the right choice.
That's a great point. Any other comments?
I'll just add, real briefly, that a big piece of the search process is the community process for getting input about what the job description needs to be and about what are the qualities that we're looking for in a superintendent. And I think regardless of who's hired, it's in the district's best interest that whenever we have this type of, the top position open, that we take advantage of having a transparent and open process to talk about what it is we're looking for before we go and look for it. So I think that regardless of who we end up picking, I think we need to spend the time to agree on what are the criteria, and that needs to be an open, transparent process. So I think that, more than anything else, is why I feel we have to bring on a firm. Once we bring on the firm and get their feedback in terms of what we're looking for, I think we can decide from there. But my feeling is that it behooves whoever we pick to know that they were the best of, that, you know, one, that we had an open process to look at what we're looking for, and then they were the best match for those criteria, you know, after an open process. I think, I just went through that. I was just selected for a job. I went through a very lengthy process and I now have the confidence that I know I have, you know, that I was the best choice for that job because I went through this process. And I think it's important to have a third party other than the board running that process. I think for those reasons, it gives us an objective third party helping us. It gives us community input and it gives the candidate who selected the assurance that they were the top candidate. For those three reasons, I'd like to do this.
Well, I'll just add, and I'm looking to you guys, we all are looking to you. But I think one of the, you know, the passion in which the teachers, excuse me, staff members, family members, and students brought forward a declaration, if you will, is not unnoticed. I think the process that the board is interested in having with relation to the vacancy or the potential, or the soon-to-be retiring superintendents filling that position is absolutely one where we need and want and reach out for input in what you believe individually and collectively the district needs. And so, you know, I think that's what we want, is to make sure that students, teachers, families, residents, parents who are not residents, the whole, you know, the whole gamut have an opportunity to provide input into what they believe are, what the profile is for that new next person. So if it comes up and it happens to be, then, you know, any internal candidate that we have currently has an opportunity to engage in that process as well as anyone outside of the district. So it's really important, and I think to piggyback on both of what they said, it's really important to make sure that your voices are heard and that you participate in that process. So what you brought to us this evening isn't lost, is the point. So if there are key qualities and things, make sure that when those, whatever search firm we move forward with, whenever that happens, that you make sure you, you know, place those comments and those notes, and these are high things, this is why, and this is why, and this is what is important to us, and everything is conveyed to that search firm. So that is part of the whole description that then goes out and goes inside as well. I mean, it's an opportunity for both internal and external candidates, so that's just how. So, any other comments?
I'm just going to piggyback on all three and just also mention that process of finding out exactly what we need and, thank you, what we need and as the board and then as staff and as parents and teachers and students also gives the candidate, whoever they are, whether it's internal, external, a very clear understanding of what we as a collective unit feel that we need from them. And then that they're not approaching that position with, you know, they'll have their own ideas of what they think the district needs, but now if we can go through this process, we can always also say, this is everything that we're expecting of you. It's right here, it's all written out, it's all planned out. We went through a very extensive process to get this plan. And then there's no miscommunication of, well, I didn't know that that's what was expected. Now, this process will be able to lay that all out. This is everything that we want, and whoever fits that bill is, you know, who's going to get hired, so. My two cents.
I'm surprised he's silent over there for once, one time. We are all shocked. Well, um...
Well, since you said that.
Well, listen.
No, I'm just going to say, I remember Simon said one time, silence is compliance.
Well, I think, I mean, the whole point, I think, was really important to make sure those who spent their time to be here after, you know, almost two hours now, that you heard that message from us. So I definitely wanted to make sure. And what I've asked superintendent's office, so I'm going to get this right, is to...
Secretary to the board.
Secretary to the board and the assistant, to make sure that we develop a superintendent's search page anyway, a search site or page, and so that the message about, you know, our desire to be inclusive and to be as transparent as process is what's there, so that if you want to share with anyone that wasn't here and that was here earlier, just so they're aware of our actions or, you know, what our feedback was in relation. But thank you for what you did this evening, so it wasn't, thank you. Any other comments from, I'll give back 20 more minutes on you.
You're going to be...
Okay, great, okay, great.
I did have a question to kick us off if we're moving on to the review. And that is, for those of you who've done this in the past, at this stage, what are we trying to narrow or winnow down to in terms of an interview? Are we interviewing, you know, I mean, clearly if there were a clear number one and that's it, but I don't think so. So there's three is in my mind, you know, two or three, but I guess I wanted to see what you guys have done before.
What's your number? Do you remember, I thought maybe we did less than what we all got.
There's a few criteria that I looked at in reviewing these. One is, the number one criteria was how open were they to an open process? Because we said we wanted to have a process where the top two candidates would have, yeah, community interviews and be more open. So several of the applications sort of argued against that or argued against it by being silent about it. And quite frankly, there were some that, where I know from their past time before us that they strongly recommend doing, against doing what we want to do. So what I looked for is the ones that were very explicit about opening. And so my top three were HYA, Ray and Associates, and McPherson-Jacobson. Although McPherson-Jacobson, although they talk a lot about openness, I would want to interview them. The second thing I looked at was price. And the first two were the most expensive. The third one that I have some questions about was among, was not the least expensive, but was, you know, way below. So I would want to sort of do an apples-to-apples comparison as to what services they're going to provide. The third thing I looked at was their references and particularly what experience do they have with schools in California? And that's something I'd want to talk about in the interview process. And the fourth thing I looked at was just how clear was their presentation as to what the process was? Because if they can be clear with us, I would hope they could be clear with the community. And so for those reasons, I picked my top three.
So to answer my question, you're thinking about three too.
[laughing]
To interview?
You know, quite frankly, I would be...
And I appreciate the criteria. That's just how I...
I would be fine with two. I would be fine with HYA and Ray. Quite frankly, I think either one of them would do an excellent job. The only reason I picked the third one is I heard a fellow board member mention three earlier, so.
The rhetorical three.
But in the, I'm fine, quite frankly, I think...
Two or three for you.
Given past interviews with these firms, I think either one of them could knock the ball out of the park.
So that's news to me, that you have interviewed both of those two and recall doing so.
HYA, I remember.
Yeah, HYA was, has been a runner-up in past, in past searches, and we were very, very impressed with them. I think our concern in the past was they had slightly less California experience, but since then, based on this materials, they've had more California experience since. Ray, I don't recall, they weren't as memorable, but their packet was quite impressive. But I'm sure other board members have comments. I do have to, regrettably, I have to leave in five minutes, so I did want to give you my two cents before I had to leave.
Let me ask this. Would we as a board want to do a local search opposed to a national search or vice versa?
I thought we went broad, I mean, we said broad in the RFP.
I think we want to go, I guess, those are sort of both criteria for me. I mean, it was a plus if they had California experience and lots of California experience. But I also wanted to see that they had capacity to go national and broad network and somewhere stronger. I'll just jump to my three. I agree on the, I also had Ray, and that, you know, they're currently doing Albany. I think they just did Berkeley. You know, it seemed like we ought to bring them in and, you know, they had a good, a good packet and we should give them a look. I did like McPherson and Jacobson. My big flag for them was they had not one single California district in there, not a one.
They want to be the first.
But, you know, there's got to be a first sometime. They do have people, you know, out here in Placerville, I mean, they have some California superintendents working for them. I thought they did the best job of explaining openness and, you know, and saying, I mean, they were the only ones that put in editorials from papers, right? Praising boards for having had such an open process. So I, at the interview stage, I would like to interview them and, you know, give them a chance to show us why they, this should be their first California effort. The third I felt less strong about, I did pick the COSCA group, and I'm having a, you know, I think it was one of the first I looked at. It's thinner than the others, so I'm not, you know, other than the fact, I think the reason, I thought their references were quite good from San Bernardino and San Lorenzo and some of the other districts, that they put the reference letters in the back and praising the things that we're looking for in terms of collaboration. But HYA is a national group, it was the best comprehensive packet of them all, I think. And I even like their four box, you know, sort of explaining different levels of confidentiality and pluses and minuses.
I love the suite of menus kind of thing. I like that.
Yeah, so I would be comfortable going with, you know, the HYA instead of, especially since they've been here before and you thought well of them over COSCA. Because I didn't feel that strongly about the COSCA group.
Actually, I picked the same three. Ray and Associates, because I spoke to a couple of references as well, and, you know, they had a good experience with Ray and Associates. Ray and Associates can also probably do a national as well as somewhat locally because of their locations in another state. So I'm figuring there's a wide variety of ability to, you know, search for a candidate. So I chose Ray and Associates. The COSCA group I'm going to pick as well, actually, I spoke to another individual who, well, actually the same individual who was recruited by COSCA, and actually, they were recruited by both COSCA and Ray and Associates, and actually they said they had a better experience with COSCA. COSCA?
COSCA.
Yeah, COSCA. They said they were very hands-on, very directive, and also was there as a mentor after they placed the individual into a district. And they have good, they're a local group, so they should have some good local references as well, some, you know, some candidates, rather, some good candidates locally, hopefully from here all the way up to Sacramento. The other, the third is HYA. I remember them from the last search. They also, national firm, good presentation, good packet. I actually liked them last time, but I think we went with, well, we did, we went with the other firm. So for that reason, I'll pick the same three as member Adfeld, maybe for little different reasons, but I think these are the best three.
Actually, those weren't my same three. I think those were Josh's three, right?
Oh, okay.
Well, you and I both had McPherson.
Oh, okay, yeah, 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 yeah.
Did you have McPherson?
I didn't do McPherson, yeah. I didn't do McPherson.
Yeah, I could go either way on McPherson.
But I had McPherson.
You had McPherson, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I didn't have...
COSCA.
No, you didn't have HYA.
I did not have HYA. So I was willing to trade my COSCA for HYA.
That is so funny. Joy, do you have?
But you like COSCA.
I only picked two that I felt were strong, though, was HYA and Ray.
Okay.
In that order?
Not necessarily that.
For me, stood out a little more.
Well, I had four, so.
Good, I gave you my extra.
I know you did, you tossed them my way. I went HYA, Ray and Associates, COSCA group, and then McPherson, so.
In that order?
Yeah.
McPherson just didn't have enough California experience.
It doesn't matter. Some, a lot of us aren't from California.
Well, I mean, that's true, but at the same time, we would like to at least have some candidates that know California law.
Well, no, they were, but they have people that are here.
Their people would be from here.
They have people here, the team. I like how they organize. I mean, I think that was part of the draw for some of these, actually.
So to make this, can I suggest that we each go around and say what are our top two and see if we end up with?
I don't think we go two.
No, I know, but if we each go to our top two, that might add up to three groups.
Okay, I'm good with that.
So that we all get our top two.
I'll start off, COSCA and Ray and Associates.
COSCA and Ray?
Yeah.
I'm HYA and Ray and Associates.
So are Joy and I.
Sorry, HYA and Ray.
Now, Olivia, what was yours again?
HYA and Ray.
What are your top two? John?
Mine are Ray and McPherson, my top two.
Oh, okay, we're back to four. It was worth a try.
No, no, it seems like HYA and Ray we should definitely get.
I think you just bring the other two in.
And then...
I'm okay with getting four.
So two of us had McPherson.
Three.
Top two.
Who's in my four?
You were going to your four, but they were your four.
Let's do top two, then let's do the third, let's do three.
I think we got our top two. We're trying to figure out if we're doing what's the third.
Ray and HYA.
Who's the top two?
Ray and HYA.
HYA and Ray, okay.
Well, why don't we just interview HYA and Ray?
No, I don't think we should narrow. I think we really need to know...
One more, one more, I'm good with three.
So the question is, it's between COSCA and Ray, or McPherson. And two of us had McPherson and, or three if you count your four.
No, you can't count your four.
Well, she can count her four because Joy gave her it.
See? They gave her it.
Very good.
All right, fine.
I would take, you know, I took my COSCA off and I put HYA in there instead. So you were the only one with, well, you could say two had McPherson, two had...
Let's do four.
I'm okay with four.
Really? Like how?
I think we did six last time, so.
Oh, really?
It looked like it.
No, we had, we did three.
Okay, I dreamed, that was a dream. Or nightmare.
Four is a lot and they have to, you know, come down here and sit through a long meeting and...
I'm good with three.
So the other piece to this, though, the four or three, wherever we land, there are, I think last time, we definitely had preset questions initially and then we did follow-up. So we'd ask them all the same core, three questions or whatever, and then do follow-up specific, you know, anything general to, I mean, do three general questions and then do some follow-up questions, and then, you know, that should be helpful and get us going, so.
Well, I think if we could have a set question about open process, particularly about community process for the final two.
Some of there thinking about it.
Yeah.
That'd be a good one.
Well, I, you know, if, I'm okay limiting it to three, even if that means one of my guys goes. It seemed like, you know, we had three for COSCA and two for McPherson, although you had McPherson. I take it back, we had three and three.
Sorry.
But we only got five.
But if we do, if we got four, we start at six, we'll be out of here by 10, less than...
I think, can we limit them on their time, so if we give each one 15 minutes?
The limit has to happen uphill.
Right, so we'll give, so, right, no, no, I'm with you. So, I mean, if we could say that we'll give each firm 15 minutes, you know...
I mean, I'd rather have more time to hear from them and interview fewer people. I think this is an important decision and I'd like a chance to really...
Well, if that's the case, we ought to do four.
There's going to be community questions as well.
I think we should just do COSCA. I mean...
I could live with that. I just threw out McPherson.
Well, you were iffy on McPherson, they were your last, they were Josh's last. I felt the strongest about them, but, you know, that was just one, and then, I also had COSCA. You felt very strongly about COSCA. Were they your top two or they were number?
Yeah, actually, they were my top two.
Okay, so why don't we do that? And McPherson, I mean, they're coming out from South Dakota or something.
Right.
It might get snowed in.
Okay, that's good.
Might be a storm.
Thank you.
HYA, Ray, COSCA.
Yes.
Yes, and COSCA.
And then you said a question about community, the community process, be a standard question for all, right? I sent you a couple, do you have that by chance? No, I haven't.
Do you have some from years past?
Well, I stole some from somewhere.
You know, I was looking for them, I couldn't find them.
Come on, this is the kind of thing we ought to have in the archive.
So some of the standard questions for them would be, how do they do their outreach? What's their take on local versus national?
What's their pool of hope?
What, we might have some questions about sort of the different options in terms of process that people have asked about.
In confidentiality, what point do you identify in the candidates?
You know, the more open we are, the fewer candidate, the fewer applicants we're going to get, and we also might want to ask them to say something about getting candidates for a small district like this.
Yeah, I found that question, I went searching last night because I thought about it last minute. What will attract a candidate for this, for our school district or this district, because you hope they've done some pre-work before they're going to come in here and talk to us? What's unique about public education in California? These are very generic. And which of their recent clients are most similar to our school district?
So with that being said, with that being said, with the conversation, I'm finna turn this thing all upside down now.
No!
McPherson and Jacobson, supposedly that's their expert. They have more, a lot of searches with small districts of our size, even though they're out of the state.
I'd say just do four.
I'm okay with four.
And just, and they're, you know...
I'm okay with four.
I'd rather do more.
And not confine ourselves and so forth.
All right, okay.
Then we're good. So we'll work on the questions and...
So should, I mean, it seems to me that's something we can do internally, confidentially, appropriately, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Figure out the question list.
We kicked out back and forth.
Yeah, so.
We can be our ad hoc, we'll employ our ad hoc to work on these questions with the superintendent's office.
There you go.
But the ad hoc has to be done, when do we need them by, Tuesday?
Well, you don't want them in the packet, do you?
No, these will be provided to them and, you know, we'll have them.
Wednesday, right?
Yeah. Well, no, you gotta give us a deadline of Tuesday.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, that's a good question, they should not be able to hear each other.
Yeah, I think we'd have them, you know, they'll stay waiting in there, right? They'll, it'll just be the first one that'll be in front of us.
Well, yes, that's how we did it. And then, but when they presented, they were able to stay in the audience.
Yeah, 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 that's fine. It's just to, you know, don't get any fresh ideas from someone else.
But they did, because the first one to present heard everybody else to follow.
Right.
But then they, but then we, they they already spoke, so.
Yes, that's true, that's true.
They couldn't come back.
Yeah, and then we'll deliberate and we'll, you know.
I'm sorry, are we giving them the questions ahead?
No. We didn't, we just had them kinda up here and we just took turns on asking questions.
Yeah.
And I think we had it set at the podium, you know, at the podium so they can read it, the question.
All right.
Okay, now, the questions are gonna come to me.
We're gonna, this group right here.
The deadline's right.
Thanks, Joshua.
Thanks, Josh, be safe.
Yeah, that's fine.
And we'll all get the list together and we'll talk about it Tuesday and then they'll be ready to go for Wednesday.
Yeah, so we'll work out questions, final one, I'll kick to Ms. Tamarie.
Well, I think, I think we should run it by the rest of the board too.
They can kick it all, then she can kick it out.
Yeah.
That's fine, they get comments.
Why don't you guys give them, you give them, send them out to the board, any divisions?
And it shouldn't be ten questions, cause we wanna do follow-up too. So, I mean, we should limit it to maybe five, five questions and then we're gonna have follow-up questions or things specific to their, you know, portfolio or what they brought.
HYA, Ray, CASCA, McPherson.
Yep.
And then that'll limit, yeah, one question apiece and then at least they limit it there, then if we have follow-up questions, woman may wanna ask, then we can just ask those questions for them. And then hopefully they may limit their presentation to anywhere between twenty to thirty minutes.
We could do less, right? I mean, did they really?
Their presentations were long, so.
Yeah, maybe.
I can certainly tell them what, I think.
Ten, fifteen minutes and then we have questions following.
Twenty-minute presentation.
Okay.
Less than that.
And what, each question, that should take, well, that's gonna take us about thirty-five, forty minutes.
True, okay. It's televised, it'll be televised.
What you think?
So you, that's what you've done in the past, they start with their presentation and then, and then, yeah, so fifteen?
Yeah.
Fifteen on that?
Okay.
And then we spend what?
Twenty minutes, questions or something or less.
Uh huh. Twenty minutes of the set questions or including the follow-up?
Yeah.
I think it could go longer than that.
It probably will.
It probably will.
It's gonna be thirty, thirty or forty.
Maybe forty-five minutes.
With a fifteen-minute presentation, a minute apiece or two minutes.
I think it's gonna be an hour, you know, for transition time and all that. I mean, I'm happy if it's less, but.
Right.
And make sure you have all their presentations to have.
At least look at an hour, that's four, that's four firms, that's four hours. What time we start?
Six, maybe.
I mean, we get through at ten, ten-thirty.
No, we don't get through at ten, we have deliberation, so that's not a get-through at ten.
Good point.
So we we're gonna need to work it to a forty-five minute. The presentations may be already on the laptop, district laptop.
Okay.
And ready to go.
Yep.
And then, you know, they can, that'll be a simple, just a matter of exiting and bringing in the next.
So if we, you know, we'll try to do a half hour of questions.
Yeah.
That's three hours.
And then we have time to deliberate.
Then we got deliberate, we're delivering public.
Yep.
And then, do we actually meet with them that night, the selected?
We said, thank you, you were awarded the, we were, well, we act, we approve or authorize us to move forward with this because we have to negotiate prices and all that stuff, so. But they'll be, basically start working the next day.
But when, I mean, most of them said, we're gonna have a meeting with you right away and develop a.
Right, profile and all that.
So this was a little bit of a disjunction for me. Yeah, because do we, and we talked about this last time, the reason we were rushing these meetings before Christmas and so they could get out and notify people. Now, are they gonna meet with, meet with us before Christmas so they can get the note, the, you know, the profile or at least a preliminary enough to get stuff out to their network so their people are looking at stuff over Christmas?
I think that'll be a good question to ask because I saw that they would be doing individual interviews with board members, they can do it by Skype, phone, go-to meetings. So I mean, that's the plus is that they would have access to us and we could be available for that if we needed to. But I think we could definitely ask how soon, you know, that they would wanna jump into it because.
But if they're gonna do a profile and.
They're not, and it wouldn't be a profile that they're gonna do, they're not talking profile in December at all.
Okay, they just talk, talking about speaking to the board.
Different thing, so they don't need to meet with all the community stakeholders to come up with the the job description announcement?
They're just gonna say, Emery Unified has a position and it's this type of district maybe and that's where they'll start.
So they could do that almost before Christmas, right?
Yeah, yeah, they'll still be able to meet that, depending on their style, how they work out.
Are you saying after they've spoken with each of you?
Well, I mean, it just depends on how they did, I know leadership, you didn't speak to all, they probably just spoke to Miguel, for instance.
Oh, really? They didn't interview you all?
Not in that first, you know, not right after we did the selection. We didn't meet with them, I didn't, I don't, until January or they emailed me a survey or something like that to kick back to them and that's how they started, so.
I think you make a good point, that's a good question, remember, to ask, as far as, you know, if you're selected, you know, how soon and what would be your next steps?
Perhaps we can ask them to present that, so they can present that information, their process timeline and their presentation, you know, that they can run through it, maybe.
If selected.
Some of them had it.
Well, I mean, just to, you know.
I think all those schedules was kinda vanilla, you know, just to kinda let us know, you know, what it'd be like. But I think in actually asking them, they can probably give us a realistic.
Cause they can, they could present us with their proposed timeline while they're, you know, in fifteen minutes, they can do that.
Right.
And then we, any follow-up, again, any follow-up question, we can do that in the question period or whatever, but makes sense? Good to go? So we have four and we have questions that will be worked on and finished and completed and sent to the board by superintendent's office, I'm getting this, and and we'll take it from there. Okay? Meeting adjourned?
Before anyone else says anything else?
Oh, any members of the, yeah.